We would ask that you would maintain that funding, which we can then keep using for our marketing efforts. If it is your desire to grant those funds to the Chamber of Commerce, with the understanding that they will reallocate funds to the city, we would ask that you mandate that. This is a large grant for us, and it is very important to us. And if it were discontinued, it would be a real hardship to the center, especially in these times. So I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for the great relationship that we've had with you.
Thank you. Anyone else here that would like to address the council with comments about the proposed 2009 budget? Is there anyone else here who would like to address the council about the proposed 2009 budget? Anyone else like to come up and be heard on the budget? This meeting or hearing? You want to do that here, or you want to do it in the council?
It doesn't matter. I mean, the public hearing is for public comment. If you want to, you have it on the agenda, so you explain the budget.
What's the pleasure of the council? You want to have Devin go through his overview PowerPoint slide now during the public hearing? Or shall we wait and do it when the item comes up during the council meeting?
Devin, how much time do you need?
It's about 10 slides, five, three, four minutes. Well, it depends on questions and everything, so.
What are we doing now?
Completely up to you. Fire away.
All right, Paul, please switch, please. On the chairs and the audience, you have the same PowerPoint that I have here, the council has on the table tonight. This is a summary of the 2009 general fund budget. The city has a number of funds that we operate out of. The general fund is the one that the taxes that the citizens pay. This is the fund that's driven by those revenues. The first slide here, which may be a little difficult to see at home, but gives a summary of all of the various departments, the amount that the finance committee is recommending for operations, short-term capital outlay, which is the short-term borrowing we do, which we'll be talking about later this evening. In the far-right column shows the total. For the general fund, the estimated total expenditures for 2009 are $7,995,115. As the mayor has discussed before, we will be putting some of the savings from the health insurance into a reserve fund. The insurance we're going to is partially self-insured, so the $63,000 will be set aside into a designated fund in the event we have a shortfall or we see a rate increase above what we're expecting for the next year. So the total general fund expenditures are $8,58,925. I put that in more of a graphical form, so it'd be easier to see where the monies go to. The largest is the police department at about 33 percent. Public Works and Facilities at about 24 percent. And then the parks and the fire department, both about 7 percent. And just so everybody's aware, there is a full copy of the budget here at City Hall for review, if you'd like to come down and see it. Next slide is on the other side, our revenue. In addition to the tax levy, we have a number of revenue sources, which includes shared revenue from the state. The city of Hudson does not get a very large amount of that. It's based on a number of factors, but one of the major factors is the valuation within the community, the ability of the community to raise its own funds. That is about the same as it was last year. Our state transportation aid, which is another major source of revenue, is down about $50,000, and it's gone down steadily, I want to say, the last three, four years. About $750,000 a couple of years ago. So that's one source of revenue that's going down. Another source of revenue that we obviously have seen a hit on is our building inspection fees due to the downturn in housing. Two, three years ago, we were budgeting $300,000 and $400,000 in that account. So that's just a summary of all the revenue. At the bottom, you'll see the general property taxes are just over $5 million for operations. And then the proceeds that we will receive, that again Betty will be talking about later, $250,000 that we'll be getting in from the short-term borrowing brings us to that $8,58,925, showing that the revenue and the expenditures that are proposed are equal. And this is just another graphic showing where our revenue comes from. Obviously, 64 percent of it comes from the property tax. And, you know, the state aid represents about 10 percent of our total budget. This is just to show how we calculate the levy. We take the total expenditures, subtract off what we call non-property tax revenue. That's all those state aids, the building inspection fees, all those other revenue. And that provides a property tax levy strictly for operations. On top of that, we add our debt service levy that we're committed to through the general obligation bonds the city has issued. And that brings us to the total levy of $65,363,673. You divide that by the assessed valuation, and the mill rate is $4, just under $4.02 a thousand. A few meetings ago, the mayor set forth that as our goal to reduce the property tax rate by 5 percent. And that's what that 402 represents, so we were able to meet that goal. This next slide just shows our equalized and assessed value. The red is assessed, the blue is equalized. You'll see there's kind of a steady upward trend with the equalized valuation until this year. Our equalized value, for the first time, went down slightly. The equalized value is the value that the state of Wisconsin says that the property in the city of Hudson is worth. And they try to equalize all the municipalities so that, for example, when the school district taxes are levied, everybody's on an equal basis. So actually, our assessed valuation went up a little bit this year, so it actually is again above our equalized. But they're fairly close. The next chart here shows the mill rate. It was right around 577 to 585. And then when we did our assessed revaluation a few years back, it dropped. We had an increase last year, and now this year it is back down to 402. This next chart shows all of the taxing districts that the city of Hudson residents pay taxes to. And it shows this year's mill rate for next year's budget, last year's mill rate. And as you'll see, all of the mill rates went down, and that's partially due to the fact that all of the taxing increment finance district, which was withheld from the valuation, is now back on. I highlighted the city. We went down, again, 21.22. We still, as of today, I do not believe we've received our state school credit yet, which is that bottom figure, so I just let that static. So we will, the total tax rate will be going down about 47 cents a thousand overall for all of the taxing districts. This shows the split between the taxing districts. Very close to last year, not a lot of shift. I brought that in, and it's very similar. So there wasn't one, which I think makes sense because they all got the same amount of valuation back on the tax rule. And the last slide I have is just to give an idea, without knowing what the lottery credit is or the state school tax credit is, gives an idea on a varied assessed valuations within the city, what we expect the decrease to be in taxes. So for example, a $300,000 home could anticipate about $142 less in property taxes this year. And again, that'll be dependent on that state school credit and the lottery credit to get the final number. And I will get those two. We expect to get those either later this week or early next week. That's just kind of a summary of the big packet that the common council has, which details everything. If there's any questions or comments on that.
Thanks, Devin. Move to close the public hearing.
I didn't know if you wanted to take comments.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing on the proposed 2009 budget for municipal operations is closed. We've got about two minutes here before it's time to start the council meeting, so if anyone wants to... Actually, I guess my watch is a little slow tonight. I see Scott's checking me out against the atomic clock there. Since it is 7 o'clock, I'd like to call to order our regular meeting of the common council of the city of Hudson for November 24th. It is 7:00 PM. And please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one tribe, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
I shall. Mayor Knudsen?
Here.
Alderperson Morissette?
Here.
Alderperson Burcom?
Here.
Alderperson Bernard?
Here.
Alderperson Wyland?
Here.
Alderperson O'Malley?
Here.
Alderperson Virchell?
At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Anyone here who would like to address the council about any item that is not listed on the council meeting agenda for tonight, on any issue that would have an impact on the city of Hudson and that the common council may address at a future meeting, this is your chance to address us. Anyone like to speak to the council tonight? Is there anyone who would like to make comments or suggestions? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would you please read those items for us?
Consent agenda: To approve the regular meeting minutes of November 10th, '08. Approve the claims for payment in the amount of $577,962.52. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office upon request and also on our webpage, under financial information. Application: Approve the renewal and issuance of a second-hand jewelry dealer's license to Richard Inlow, Doing Business as Inlow Designs, 523 Second Street. Approve the Friday, December 5th candlelight stroll event and the reindeer-in-the-park event to be held Saturday, December 6th, and to include approval for a fire pit near the ban shell on Saturday, December 6th, contingent upon agreement by the fire chief and the public works and parks director. Approve a children-at-play signage in Hudson Meadows Edition if the residents are willing to pay for those signs. Approve the hot air event, the torchlight parade, and the schedule of activities planned for February 6th, 7th, and 8th in 2009. And place on file the quarterly reports of the library director, the water utility director, and the public utility commission minutes of November 11th, '08.
Okay. Those are the items. We have a motion to approve. A motion and a second on those items. Roll call vote, please.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Burcom?
And the consent agenda items are approved. Next item comes from the finance committee. Applications for operators' licenses. There were seven. Staff recommendation was for approval. The finance committee recommendation is to approve these.
Mr. Mayor recused myself.
Mr. Morissette is recused.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve them. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the applications for operators' licenses are approved. Item number four concerns the retirement and replacement of a police department patrol officer. It's before you because we have a hiring freeze on right now that requires that things come and be approved before posting and replacement of retirees. Officer J.R. Zemick has given his notification of intent to retire from the police department on February 1st, 2009. Chief Jensen's recommendation is that we replace him effective January 3rd, which would give us a slight overlap of time, but it will work out in the budget for a variety of reasons. And the staff recommendation is to approve the replacement on or after January 3rd, and the finance committee concurred and recommends approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number five from the finance committee. Review of job descriptions for the fire department assistant chief positions was submitted by Chief Jim Fry. These positions have been in existence but have never had job descriptions. He's worked up some detailed job descriptions and recommended approval, and the finance committee discussed this and also recommended adoption of these position descriptions.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Randy? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Number six, application of Hudson Hockey Association for a temporary Class B retailers' license to sell beer at the Hudson Crusaders hockey game of December 6th, 2008. We approved a temporary license for the Crusaders game that was held this past Saturday night. There were no problems at that game. We, at the finance committee, heard a report from Chief Jensen that they didn't see any problems. Apparently, attendance was relatively light, maybe in the range of under 35 people total, and not all that many of them were consuming the alcohol that was being offered. With some discussion of this, the finance committee recommended that we make an approval for one more game and that we continue to take these on a game-by-game basis. And so the recommendation is to approve a license for December 6th.
Contingency that they provide the name of a bar ten, a licensed operator within the city prior to the issuance of the license.
Recuse myself for that discussion.
Mr. Virchell is recused. Any discussion? We ready for a motion?
If I am asked to make a motion, I will move to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny.
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to give you the rationale.
Sure.
For my reason to deny. While I do not feel strongly that this is a terrible thing or anything like that, I believe that granting this temporary license is to no purpose, because I certainly don't intend to vote for a long string of temporary licenses so that beer is always served at the Hockey Association games. I wasn't crazy about that idea to begin with. And if that is the case, as it seems, that they would come back for more, why go down that road?
There was another interesting piece of logic at the finance committee meeting. If each of these is looked as an individual event, and we have something that happens twice in the summer, maybe the same group, you know, maybe they're three months apart, how do we look at those as separate licenses? I mean, these, if we look at them, are each is specifically a unique and separate event, right? But putting them together, then you ask that question. Is this become a new type of license? Or do we actually look at them as each and every individual event? And that's one of the things we're asking Catherine. At what point does it become a new kind of license?
I think when you have continuity. I think when it occurs again and again and again. Twice in the summer is a whole lot different than every other week.
Lori?
Well, Catherine had mentioned that we could possibly add additional restrictions to our temporary license process.
Well, right now, the ordinance is just authorized issues of a temporary license as authorized under state law. State law just has, they've got to be picnic fairs, ag association, and that's been utilized to mean nonprofit. It cannot be for a business, a for-profit purpose. So the council has statutory authority to adopt additional restrictions by ordinance than required under state law. You haven't done that yet, but I think Lori's question was, do we, at some point, does the city want to look at this whole concept?
Because honestly, I don't, I guess I'm not interested in saying no to this temporary license because I'm afraid they're going to come back in two weeks. If we don't want to see that happen, if we don't want to see it be a string of 10 licenses, then we should look at adding something to our statute. But it seems, I don't know, it seems somewhat unfair to say no because we're afraid you're going to come back.
Well, it seems arbitrary, because it's like, if it's looked at as an individual license, how do we evaluate it other than a separate request for an individual license?
Well, I think you need to say, what are the reasons why you don't think it's a good idea to issue a temporary license in this type of situation? It's a recreational activity, you know, I'm not, there's minors, what have you. Those are all policy, safety-type reasons that you could decide this is not an appropriate situation where we want, where we think beer should be served. That's something for the council to decide. That would be the underlying reason for deciding not to issue it. You'd have to have, you should have some articulate why.
Well, articulate that reason, that minors are involved. And I think that Lori has a good point. If this were a once-in-a-greatwhile fundraiser for the Hockey Association, and I want the Hockey Association to do well, but I don't know that selling beer at every game or every other game is the way to do that. And as to whether or not they would come back to ask for more, I was kind of under the impression they would, because this is the second request in two council meetings. And I would expect another one at our next council meeting.
I don't think we can make that judgment. And they may decide on their own, it's worth it or it's not worth it, or, you know. I don't want to, I guess I don't want to make a decision on this one based on trying to read their mind for what they're going to do two weeks from now. I would much rather see the council look at, do we want to further restrict the number of temporary licenses so it doesn't turn into an unending string of every other week?
And my concern there, too, is if it's a different kind of license, any other organization will. But without those restrictions in place saying you can have two temporary licenses a year or three temporary licenses a year, it's hard to say, no, you can't have this one because I don't have any other criteria to say no.
Any further discussion? We have a motion to deny. Unless there's further discussion, I think we're ready to vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
Mr. Virchell is recused. Lori and Lee voted no. The other three were yeses, and the motion carries. Next item, number seven, proposal from Honeywell for an energy conservation study. The recommendation from the finance committee is to approve the expenditure of, not to exceed $8,400 for an energies... What's it called, Devin? It's the study part of coming up with energy efficiency improvements for our buildings.
Comprehensive facility analysis.
We've done a preliminary study, and now we want to get more detailed information so the council can make decisions on which projects they do and don't want to complete.
Discussion at finance was that we're going to ask that the contract have some additional staff work and work from our attorney before we enter into the contract. And I'd recommend approval. I'd like to see us move forward with improving our energy efficiency. We put $70,000 into the budget this year to move in that direction. These funds could come out of that $70,000. It would still leave us with a substantial amount of money to spend on some of the items that are identified. Or we could enter into a larger, all-encompassing plan through Honeywell that would be a multi-year commitment. That's a bridge we'll cross when we get to it. But this is the next step down the road here.
Move for approval, not to exceed $8,400.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve entering the agreement with Honeywell. The contingency that the attorney will modify the contract language until it's acceptable to us. And if we can't come to a deal on those terms, it won't happen, I guess. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor? Did you have a comment? Oh, I thought I saw you getting ready to comment. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is consider purchase of street de-icing equipment. And I'll turn this over to Mr. O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom Zulley and I, our new director of Parks and Public Works, have discussed this at some length, and I've discussed it with Dan Ortner, who was in charge of handling these machines for the city. I need to draw a distinction here because we have in the 2009 budget an amount set aside, $25,000 already budgeted for pre-wetting, which is a way of combining the road salt that we have with calcium chloride. It makes it about 30 percent more effective, so we spend less money on road salt. And that's good because the price of road salt has gone up dramatically in the past year. Although this unit you see before you now also uses calcium chloride, it is not pre-wetting, it is anti-icing. This is what we do if we know that snow is coming and we want to protect particularly high-traffic intersections ahead of time. We can put down this solution using just a light utility truck, or what we call our cement truck, although we use it for everything under the sun, and safeguard over the nighttime hours those high-traffic intersections so that when we get to it the following morning, it's not already, those intersections are not already covered in snow. Tom Zulley can explain this probably a lot better than I can, the difference between the different chlorides that we're discussing, magnesium chloride, potassium chloride, sodium chloride, calcium chloride. They all melt ice. And Tom, could you take it from there?
Sure, I'll try. Like Mr. O'Malley said, this is a different process than the pre-wetting that we had talked about and have money budgeted for. This is a chemical or a solution that we can put down prior to the snowstorm. One advantage is if this is underneath the snow and ice that when we come to plow, that that snow and ice will come off easier than if it was hard-packed. So it's going to save money, you know, when we try, you know, have the removal of the snow. The second thing is, like Scott referred to, is that if we can get this prior, this chemical on prior to the storm, first, we're going to have safety, safer roads, and when we will probably not be called out as soon as if we had the chemical on the road. So it's going to possibly save some overtime call-outs and things like that.
Tom, as part of the procurement process we follow, we've received two other quotes. Can you give us those dollar figures? This is $3,200 for a two-year-old machine that has been lightly used simply because it's good for a higher-traffic area. It was owned previously by a smaller town that didn't use it that much.
And they're asking for this two-year-old anti-icing machine and tank. And along with that, we get, there'd be another 250-gallon storage containers. That cost was $3,200. If we were to purchase just the anti-icing equipment, brand-new, it'd be, we have a quote for $7,077. And that doesn't include the two extra storage tanks.
And we have another quote for $8,000.
Okay, thank you. I think, well, first, just so that everyone understands that while this has been discussed in the past by the public works committee, this particular item became available. It hasn't been discussed by the public works committee, and due to a... hasn't been discussed by the Public Works Committee, and due to a short timeframe for our Finance Committee meeting tonight, we also postponed that to the full council. So we're essentially meeting as a committee of the whole to discuss this. I think the Chairman of the Public Works Committee is in favor of it. I think it's a good buy, and it makes sense. We decided this year that we would address the skyrocketed price of salt by investing in technology and innovation and different ways to minimize our salt usage, and this makes sense to me. So I'd recommend that we go forward with it. The money can be found from within the 2008 Public Works Department budget. They have an annual allocation of money for repair of catch basins, stormwater catch basins, which was not completely used. We were hoping to use those funds for some other things between now and the end of the year, but it is within the Public Works budget. I think we're ready for a motion.
Move to approve-
Wait a minute, did you have a question before the motion?
Yeah, what's the amount? I guess, go ahead.
I'm going to ask you to approve thirty-two hundred dollars. That's the anti-icing unit which slides onto the utility truck and the companion storage tanks to hold the solution.
So all this information on the backside is not applicable to-
No, that's just background.
That's background.
That also applies to the budget items for next year.
Do we have the money?
Hold it, hold it here. We've got a motion, we don't have a second yet.
Second.
Oh, we have a second, now your question.
Do we have the money for eight, or the seven oh seven, seven bid on the second page? I just don't want to buy somebody else's junk, and let's do it right the first time.
We do not have seven thousand dollars left over. Catchment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the Public Safety Committee Agenda Item Number Four. Consider retaining the stop sign on westbound Crestview Drive at Hagan Street and painting a stopping block. Item comes from Public Safety Committee. The committee recommendation is to keep that stop sign there, and when possible, we should repaint the stopping block that went away when we did the melon overlay, and it never got repainted.
Correct.
I'm sorry, stealing the thunder. Would you like to introduce this-
It wasn't very big thunder, it's okay. Yeah, when the road was done, we'd noticed that the stopping block was missing, and we're recommending it painted back in there.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes.
What precipitated putting a stop sign there versus putting a yield sign back? About twelve homes up on the top. I know there's a new office building down there, but I go through that intersection three to four times a day, and I would guess ninety percent of the people don't stop there anyway. And I'm trying to figure out, is it a safety issue? I know from a standpoint of wasting energy on cars, it just makes absolutely no sense to have a stop sign there, in my opinion.
We looked at some other intersections in the area where a stop is used versus a yield. We put it in as a temporary measure. We asked the police department to follow, has it reduced accidents? And we're having a lot of rear-end accidents where people were coming up to that yield sign, the people behind them assumed they weren't going to stop, smack, they get rear-ended.
What's the definition of a lot?
Do you remember off the top of your head?
Definition of a lot?
Of quite a few rear-end accidents that happened in the years 2006, '78.
And are we going to enforce the stop sign if we're going to put one there?
The other, the other issue that was there was that there were issues with, we had some issues with near misses of people coming across the intersection. We also changed the timing on the lights to help, to help free up some of that. But we are continuing to review, at our last meeting, we reviewed the number of accidents that happened since February. And as far as we can tell by the analysis, so far, the number of accidents at that intersection is down. But we will continue to review that, and if it doesn't seem to be helping, I think we can revisit it. But the committee right now is saying it seems to be, from our reports, the stop sign is a better action because people are stopping and looking instead of just blowing through the intersection. And if they aren't stopping, that has to do with driving behavior, not the, not the stop sign.
Well, I think it has to do with enforcement, not necessarily driving behavior. If nobody enforces the stop sign, they're likely stopped there.
Marty, can you speak to that one? Enforcement of that stop sign?
Well, obviously, if our officers see a violation of the stop sign, they're obviously going to take action on it. But the problem is, is that with a limited number of resources out handling calls, they're not always monitoring that intersection. And we've gotten a directive from the Public Safety Committee that they wanted us to concentrate on speeding issues in the city, so our extra officer that we've had on duty has been assigned as a traffic car, has been in those areas where we've had speeding complaints. So we haven't really had an issue with somebody sitting up there watching that stop sign. However, if the direction from the council wants us to crack down on that stop sign, we'll be more than happy to do so.
Well, I think that the point here was, how do we reduce the number of safety issues at the intersection? And if people don't stop, they're required to stop. But if they choose not to, and we still have reduced the amount of accidents at the corner, we've still accomplished what we set out to accomplish.
Can you give us some information so that we have something to look at, as the number of accidents before versus after we put the stop sign in?
Certainly. We had some of that information at our last meeting, and we've asked the chief to summarize it for us again.
Do we have that information available tonight?
No, sir.
Well, I believe it's too cold now to paint. Am I right about that?
That's correct.
So there won't be any painting till spring. There's a stop sign there today, there'll be one tomorrow if you pass this motion. I get the feeling that your preference is that it be removed and restored to the way it was for years as a yield sign, and-
Well, unless I have information that can contradict it, you know, the traffic coming from the west is minimal. I mean, there is not a lot of traffic coming from the west. So, again, we have a group of, what is it, fourteen thousand cars a day that are on that street? And we're having that, probably not all of them are going right, but a vast majority are going right there. And having that line up at five o'clock from there, back all the way to, I don't know how far back, a half a mile back, does that make any sense for traffic flow and car movement when we can have them yield if there's no one coming from the other direction?
Is it backing up that far?
Yeah.
That wasn't presented to us in our last meetings, because we talked about the whether-
I would suggest you go up in luck.
Whether it backs up at the yield sign on the bridge, it's either going to back up on the bridge or back up before the bridge. It's still going to back up because of that stoplight. So it's very possible that some of it was moved backwards, but it's still going to back up wherever you have that stop.
Okay, anyone else? All right.
I can give you some evidence that's entirely anecdotal, but this evening, I was at exactly that intersection, westbound, and stopped at that stop sign, which has the little sign below it that says, "Right turn, obey this sign." And there were, I was the only car there, except for one car that was coming up behind me. But, and not to say that you're wrong, it's just that I can tell you at five, approximately five o'clock this afternoon, there was no traffic backup whatsoever.
Well, either of you want to chime in? Here's where we're at. We've got a motion. If you want to amend it, if you want to do something else with it, otherwise, we're going to vote on this motion.
That's right.
Yes.
I'll just say, unfortunately, we don't have those numbers, Al, but it was a significant decrease in the amount of rear-end accidents that were up there. Hence, that's why that sign is still there, otherwise, the public safety would have changed it. Months ago. But what's significant? Has there been ten accidents there? Has there been twenty accidents? Has there been five? Two? I want to say between, and Marty, I don't, I don't want to put it in anybody's words, twenty-five to thirty-five leading into us putting that sign there. Thirty-five accidents at that corner? In a what period of time? There was, I can't-
There were a lot of accidents that, but they were related to that intersection. I can all say that they were at that slope.
Some were beam accidents, some were different kinds of accidents. There were those, yeah.
I don't believe there were any accidents between the time we put the stop sign in and tonight.
And that's why when I said significant, there wasn't anything on the paper we could say that we'd seen a new accident. So that was significant.
And you give that credence to the stop sign we put in?
There doesn't seem to be any others, but it hasn't been a full year yet.
I think part of the impetus was the yield sign didn't seem to be having much impact on that traffic. And there just isn't issue with it being one lane in the northbound direction. It's a lot, so.
And there is also a study open right now that I believe Denny's still working on in his spare time to look at if we can re-strive that and change that to a four-lane bridge. If we can do that, then it would be possible to make that a yield sign again, because they'd have their own lane. So it's not a dead issue.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Burchill votes no. Five to one, motion passes. Next item is update on projects. Hey, there's Mr. Schwartz. Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Things are starting to quiet down, but we are doing a few things out there. We have collected site data now for the proposed Carmichael Mill and Overlay project, and this information will be ready for you at your next meeting. Estimated costs as well as visuals of where these proposed improvements will take place, along with options.
Okay.
Crestview Drive Mill and Overlay, Lakefront Retainer Wall, all that remains on those is a final pay request, getting those in order, making sure we have all the proper documentation, et cetera.
I'll be happy to see those two finished.
Yes. And I was hoping that we could have it this time, but again, we're ready, they haven't provided us with all their paperwork, so once they do that, we agree on a price, then finalize those out. Other projects going on in town, the Hampton Inn, they are, they have poured their footings, they're backfilling, they're doing a little bit of utility work out there for that. And I suspect in December, Comfort Suites will start their construction. Also, Heritage Cottages and Heritage Boulevard, and the Heritage Green Development, that work, utility work is underway, and they've got a, probably two-thirds of the sanitary sewer installed, and they're currently installing water main. So, with that being said, is there any questions for me this evening?
I'd like to make a comment, Chuck. In the past couple of weeks, I have received some favorable comments on Lakefront Park. It looks great, and people are starting to say that. So it's good to have it finished. It's a welcome addition to the city. Again, it's good to have it finished.
It is. I've also heard those comments, and I've also heard positive comments about Crestview Drive and the triple-left turn lane, including last night, I rode with one of the patrol officers, and, you know, there's a sense that that's actually working pretty well. Traffic doesn't back up as far as it used to, for one thing.
That's great.
Any further questions for Chuck? Thank you.
Thank you.
Without objection, I'd like to take Item B first, under New Business, at the request of our City Treasurer, Betty. Item B is review bids and approve issuance of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of general obligation promissory notes for the City of Hudson, 2009 capital outlay, Resolution Number 23-08.
At our last meeting, you gave me approval to proceed with obtaining bids for our short-term financing, our general obligation of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar notes. We did that locally, and I have put the bids in front of you tonight. We received three of them. We received one from Citizens State Bank at a three-point-five-two percent, Associated Bank at three-point-nine percent, and First National Community Bank at four-point-three-seventy-five percent. So I would like to recommend to council that we go with Citizens Bank. The only stipulation we have with them is that we have to close this by December first. We have all the paper in order, just needing signatures, one from the city attorney tonight before she leaves. And other than that, if you've got any questions?
We need to move to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Brokaw?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
And the motion to suspend the rules is passed. We're ready to consider adoption of Resolution 23-08.
I'm moved to adopt Resolution Number 23-08.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any discussion?
I can't help but note that, just like every year, we make about twenty million dollars in interest, and we borrow about a quarter of a million dollars for notes. And it would be nice if someday we could get to the point of just keeping our own quarter of a million, rather than paying ten thousand dollars a year in interest to the banks. Other than that, we're going-
We're going to only pay twenty-nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars in interest, so that's good. And this year is going to be hard to make really good interest earnings. We also include that in our general budget to bring down the tax levies. So I agree, it's one way of getting around the levy limits at this point.
Any further comments or discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Resolution is adopted. Do we need roll call on that?
On adopting the resolution? I don't think so.
Borrow money?
No.
All right, that takes us back to Item A of New Business. The 2009 appropriation ordinance for municipal operations, this is our budget ordinance Devon, any further comments, background on this?
We presented most of the information in the budget hearing. The proposal in front of you, the total operation and including the debt levy, or debt service, I'm sorry, would be nine million, four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars would be the total that would be for operations, and you're authorizing a tax levy of six-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. And that would give us a four-point-oh-two mill rate.
If I could make a few comments, the, it's been an unusual budget year for us in that we had the closure of TID Number Four. That gave us a lot of options in the way that we could approach this year's budget. We both got a large increase in our tax base. We also got a large one-time lump-sum cash proceeds from the closure of the TID, which in our case came to just over a million dollars. In addition, we've been working hard in the area of our healthcare and health insurance expenses, and we've put together a program that will reduce those outlays for healthcare by about, how much?
Then add on the general fund was about two-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars.
Two-hundred-and-seven for the general fund, more like over four-hundred-thousand dollars for citywide, including our revenue funds with the water utility and wastewater and so on.
The personnel costs actually, because of that, went down this year by about thirty-five-thousand dollars. So that was unusual.
So my suggestion to the council, and the way that we've put this budget together, and the Finance Committee has looked at it, is that we should share that benefit that has been developed by the Business Park Committee and all their hard work. The city staff and the taxpayers have supported the Business Park and Tax Increment District Number Four over the years since it was started in 1995 or so. During the course of all those years, none of their taxes that they've been paying have gone towards things like police and protection and snow plowing and all those different things. The taxes that they've been paying have been going for nothing but to pay for the improvements that we put in out there. And so you could say that all the other taxpayers have been paying extra to kind of carry the load for that large new business park. We're lucky to have it. You'll see a tax break for all the residents of the school district, even if you live out in, say, the town of Hudson, you'll see a tax break this year because that business park went in, in essence, because it's going on to the-
County tax rolls.
It's going on to the school district tax rolls. It's going on to the school district tax rolls. And those governmental entities also got a large payment, each of them, as we closed it this year. So the impact of the TID can't be overstated, and that was a big event. The recommendation that I made was that we should take a very conservative approach, that we should increase our operations budgets, but also tax cut. And so the tax rate cut, the mill rate cut here will be 5%. All our city operations budgets are going up 5% as well.
4.61.
4.61.
We're under 5.
So it's about 5%. At the same time, the other component of what I dubbed the 5-550 Plan was that we should increase our infrastructure spending, maintenance primarily of roads. From this year, it was about $1.3 million. We should increase that by 50%, and it'll be about $2 million then in this budget. We've had some deferred maintenance, we've built a lot of miles of road, and we're pretty well all cognizant of the fact that we maybe haven't been able to spend as much money on maintaining those roads as we should or as we'd like to. And we're going to set about to remedy that. Under this plan, we'll be able to afford to do that $2 million this year, but also next year and the next year. We're not doing it out of the cash proceeds. We're doing it on the basis of that additional tax base that we've developed that is going to let us all see road improvements without seeing tax increases to pay for it. So that's a little bit of the benefit of that TID closure, and I think it makes sense. At the same time, during the public hearing, there was discussion about the allocation of the room tax dollars. Now, this is a little bit of a departure this year because in the past, we haven't talked about room tax allocations during the budget process. And back in August, I suggested to you that we might want to look at that and do that differently. In the past, what has been done in the budget is simply a number. Here's our revenue, $150,000. Here's what we're going to spend, $150,000. And the actual appropriations, if you will, have not been actually incorporated during the budget process. I suggested a couple of things this year, and one is that I think that the room tax could be handled differently and would benefit the city as a whole if we did handle it differently. And so can you?
Yep.
Paul, could you turn on the power? Switch to that, and I want to give you a little bit of background on room tax funding, a review of the history of it, where it comes from, why we get to do it, and so on. The, that might be a little bit small. This is where the statutory authority for it comes from. In Hudson, we adopted the room tax in 1987 at the suggestion of the Chamber of Commerce. Came to the city, and this had just become an option in the state just shortly before that. And you can see that the bottom line is there, the tax shall be at the rate of 3% of gross receipts from rooms and lodgings, and it was 3% and has been 3% ever since. Under the state room tax law, the requirement prior to 1994 was that 40% be spent on, quote, "tourism promotion and development." After 1994, that law was changed, and now the new law is 70% to be spent on tourism promotion and development. But we're grandfathered under the original 40% rule as long as our original room tax law, which was in effect in 1994, has not changed. So that means if we changed it in any way, or particularly, the most likely thing would be if you increased the tax rate, then you'd no longer be grandfathered, and then we would have to spend a minimum of 70% on, quote, "tourism promotion and development." Under state law today, the room tax may be up to 8%. The law defines what is tourism promotion and development. Tourism promotion and development means any of the following that are significantly used by transient tourists. The term transient is also defined in the law, but I think it's pretty obvious to everyone what it means. It's not people that are here already, it's people that are passing through and traveling. So there are three things that you can spend it on. Number one, marketing projects, including advertising media buys, creation and distribution of printed or electronic promotional tourist materials, or efforts to recruit conventions, sporting events, or motor coach groups. The second one is transient tourist informational services, and the third would be a convention center. The second one, the transient tourist informational services, is one of the services that we have provided to us by our tourism bureau. And so the, what is a tourism entity? The city has the option of forming a tourism commission. Were we to choose to do that, which we never have, it would be composed of four to six members, at least one of which has to be representative of the lodging industry in town. The mayor would appoint the members, subject to confirmation of the council, and the commission then would be required to contract with a tourism entity to provide staff, support services, and assistance in developing the programs. We have never done this. Were we to do it, the only tourism entity in town is the tourism bureau, or we could spend the money directly. What we've chosen is kind of a hybrid approach. We don't have the commission. The council has always sort of acted as the commission ourselves, and we do contract with the tourism entity, which is any nonprofit organization that came into existence before January 1st, 1992, and provides staff, development, or promotional services for the tourism industry in a municipality. What happened is when the room tax law was adopted, the Chamber of Commerce changed their name to Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and has since that time been our tourism entity. Last year, we had revenue of just over $150,000. At least that's the way we budgeted it. We're actually coming in slightly above that. The required 40% under state law comes to $60,000, and we have transferred that to the tourism bureau last year. And in doing that, we have fulfilled all our obligations under state law. That's the only part of the room tax dollars that is tourism-related money. All the other money comes from the room tax, but it just flows into the general fund. It isn't really any different than any other general fund money. We could spend it on anything we chose to. In addition to that $60,000, last year, we paid directly from the city to the fireworks company. We paid for the Booster Days fireworks display, about $10,000. We supported as a city the Walleye Tournament in the Spirit of the St. Croix event, $6,750, and then we paid Chamber of Commerce dues of $7,800. And so by that definition, you could say we spent directly on tourism support 56% of our dollars. Some of the other things that we've been spending this money on, in 2008, we engaged in what I called city beautification projects. $6,800 was spent from this on the downtown decorative lighting, sometimes called the Christmas lighting, holiday lighting. It is strings of lights that we run year-round. The electricity cost to run that and the costs involved with doing that have gone up pretty dramatically. Two years ago, it was about four, between $4,000 and $5,000. This year, it's going to come to about $6,800. We also budget for decorative banners on the light poles, and we have budgeted $3,000 for flower baskets. Those beautification projects would be paid for somewhere, I think, if they weren't being paid for by room tax dollars. So it's kind of illustrates the point that, you know, it's all going into the same fund in the end. Some other things that we spent money on this year. Municipal support for culture and the arts. We gave a $5,000 grant to the Octagon House and the Historical Society. We took over the Miss Hudson pageant and support for the float that goes around as an ambassador of goodwill from the City of Hudson to our surrounding communities around the region, $2,500 in support for that. And we sponsored the Band Shell Concert in the Park series down at Lakefront Park, $5,700 was budgeted for that. And then we gave $8,000 to the FIP Center for the Arts. And you can see I put down there tourism-related. They've made a real strong case for the fact that they bring tourism to the city. I put this down under support for culture and the arts because I think realistically that's more what our support for the FIPS is, but you could put it in a couple of different places here. There have also been tourism-related subsidies. We started giving $10,000 to the Hudson Hockey Association a few years ago and have continued that on an annual basis for a number of years. We have been giving $2,500 directly from the city to the Hot Air Fair in the form of tourism support. And then again, here I have the FIPS down, the FIPS got $8,000 and could be classified variously. And then there are other community subsidies. Last year, we gave $2,000 to Big Brothers Big Sisters. We gave $5,000 to Community Action. We gave $1,000 to the VFW, $4,550 to the Hudson Area Senior Citizen Center, and $5,000 to the Cemetery Association. Couple of these are fairly unique. The VFW is unique and runs the Memorial Day Ceremony and so on. The Hudson Area Senior Center is in Hudson. It is an area asset. We're the only community that supports them in this way with tax dollars. In talking with the county, we're really fairly unique in the whole county in that we give city tax dollars to our area senior center. But we have, and we do, by the same token, the Cemetery Association is a private group that runs the cemetery, sells the plots, maintains the cemetery. The thinking here, I think, has been that there is the historic part to the east of Ninth Street that has the old Civil War cemetery that really isn't generating any income, and it's almost a historic support payment. Their total donations last year were $5,300, and we gave them $5,000 of it, so we're their major source of donation support. Here's what I propose this year. I'd like to see us increase our tourism promotion and development money up to 70%. That's what would happen under the state law were we to increase our room tax rate. We'd be forced to do this. I think we should voluntarily do it, and it isn't so easy to do when you've been doing with this money what we've been doing with it, which is spread it around the community to a lot of worthy groups instead of spending it on direct tourism development and support. Under this system, 70% would be granted directly to the Tourism Bureau with two exceptions. One would be their chamber dues would come out of it, and the other would be we'd continue to pay for our fireworks display out of it. The 70% spending on tourism support would be required, as I said, if we were to raise the rate. I'm not in favor of raising the rate, but I'd like to point out that with two new hotels under construction by 2010, the amount of room tax dollars that will be collected will probably be significantly higher than it is today. As a comparison, the surrounding cities of River Falls and Stillwater transfer over 90% of their room tax revenues directly to their Tourism Bureau. And this is pretty common around, in Wisconsin, it's mandated by state law, and the money goes, in most cases, directly to a tourism entity. In this case, it would be our Tourism Bureau. In Hudson, we somehow got into the habit of giving to groups like the Hockey Association on the basis that they would and do support tourism. But the question you have to ask is whether that's actually a community subsidy or tourism. Because I'm afraid if they didn't have our money, almost as many tourists would come to town for the hockey tournaments. I'm not sure how many extra we get for our $10,000, but if it would be 100, then we're paying $100 each for them, which is a pretty expensive way to get tourists to come here. The idea of the tourism promotion and development is that it should be spent on a marketing campaign to market the city as a whole, the City of Hudson as a tourist destination, not one event or program or entity. So, you know, here's what we did last year. I already went over those, but that just shows it all as a list again. They range from $1,000 to $10,000 to a bunch of very worthy groups. What I've suggested is that there's three of these that have been engaged in tourism-related activities, and to the extent that they are, I think we should block grant the money to the Tourism Bureau. They're the tourism experts, and let them make a decision about how much money gets in turn transferred back out to groups like the Hot Air Fair and the FIPS if they're doing tourism-related things, and the Hockey Association, so that we direct the 70% through the Tourism Bureau. I'm suggesting that we limit subsidies for history, culture, and the arts to a maximum of $4,000 a year to any of these groups. That will mean that some groups get less than they've been getting. And the FIPS in particular then would get $4,000 in support of the arts as a grant directly from the city. If there's tourism-related things, they could still go to the Tourism Bureau and make the same case that's been made to me and the rest of the council over the last few weeks for why they have a strong case for bringing tourism to the city. And so then the Historical Society, the FIPS, the Cemetery Association, the Senior Citizen Center, and so on would get what they've been getting, or if it was over 4,000, they'd be trimmed back to 4,000 for next year. And then there's two that are very worthy organizations that I have suggested, you know, you can't do this, there's a limited pool of money here. Something's got to give, and this is the hardest part of it, is that if we spend more on direct tourism, advertising, marketing, and tourism development support, we're going to have a little less of these community subsidies. And I suggested over a two-year period that we phase out a couple of these. Big Brothers and Big Sisters is a good one. Community Action is an excellent organization, but I'm not sure how we got into the idea that we're giving taxpayer dollars to these specific charitable nonprofit organizations. There are dozens of other groups. If you talk about sports, I mean, here's a list of some of the other groups in our community that don't get room tax funding. The Hudson Soccer Association, the Hudson Area Swim Association, Hudson Basketball Association, Hudson Boosters don't get dime one, and they do fantastic things. The Hudson Band Backers, the Hudson Benchwarmers, Volleyball Association, Softball Association, this list could go on. In the area of other nonprofit things, here's another group of very worthy nonprofits that aren't getting any of these city tax dollars, and you have to ask yourself, how did we come up with this system that we're doing it the way we're doing? The YMCA Partners with Youth, Camp St. Croix, United Way, the Hudson Area Library Foundation, the Hudson Memorial Hospital Foundation, the Bridge for Hudson Youth, the Hudson Senior Graduation Party. I could make you a list of 20 more that aren't getting any tax dollars. How did we come to the point that we've done this? It's just been an evolutionary thing. We've been real good at adding on people, but we hardly ever take anyone off this list. And what I'm saying is I'd like to suggest that we approach this difficult matter and try to remember that the reason the room tax was instituted was for the purpose of tourism development and support, best done through the Tourism Bureau.
On the table tonight, there's the printout that I updated with the mayor's recommendation.
Okay, so this would be with this recommendation. This is not what I recommended back in August because the feedback I got over the last week is that the FIPs deserve support even if we're not giving tourism dollars out in the way that we did in the past. If we're giving support for culture and the arts to anyone, we ought to give support for culture and the arts to the FIPs. And so this is a little bit different. It does balance, this still leaves an unallocated amount at the end of the year of $1,400. So we'll have a little bit of cushion left. And this is really just one small part of our entire budget process, but it seems to have gathered a fair amount of interest. And so with that, I'd suggest that you approve the budget.
Are you including those, the improvement with this allocation of the room tax?
Correct. There was no, the total amount, so there's no impact on the ordinance because 152,000 just out of the distributor. But what the mayor's recommending is what you have in your hand there, Randy.
So if we approve the budget, this is done?
Not necessarily.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Amend the budget.
You could postpone this decision to a future point. That's what's been done over the last many years. It's never been dealt with at budget time. It's always been dealt with at another...
And that recommendation then would be to move it all to that what's called unallocated, which is the last line item there on your printout in your hand.
Yep.
That would be an option, would be to put the 152,000 in there if you were not ready to make a decision tonight and then a decision could be made at a later date.
Well, if we can talk about it, maybe we'll get somewhere. I'll, you know...
I think first we need to suspend the rules to talk about the ordinance.
I believe that was a motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Any discussion before we vote on that? All in, let's see, roll call vote?
Yeah, let's have a roll call vote.
Morissette?
Brokaw.
I knew she was going to start off somewhere else.
Brokaw.
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Wiland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes and the rules have been suspended towards adoption of the 2009 Appropriation Ordinance for Municipal Operations, Ordinance Number 9-08. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance 9-08 with the proviso that we take up the room tax allocation at a later date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Oh, there we go. We've got a lot of interest and a lot of discussion on the room tax dollars. Should we, and we've already had a presentation, should we spend some time discussing it before we adopt this?
Well...
His motion.
The motion is to postpone that until next meeting.
I know it is, but I'm asking you why.
I could take your motion as an amendment if you wanted it to be taken that way.
I guess I'd like to know why we would put it off.
Well, we could have it tonight if you want.
I think it's long overdue. I think a discussion of what we're going to do with this, this has dragged on for...
Yeah, I'm sort of not, I'm not in favor of postponing it unless we talk about it after we approve.
You mean tonight yet?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't have it, can we do that? I suspect we either deal with it under the agenda item that's here...
As part of the budget.
As part of the adoption of the budget, or we postpone it and renotice it as another...
As a separate room tax.
Separate item. Lee, do you have a motion?
I think Scott has one on the table.
Well, we have a motion second on the table.
Right.
Well, I mean, I'm encouraging you to amend his motion.
The reason for postponing would be to have it separately noticed.
Yeah, it'd have to be at a different time, not tonight.
But as far as...
That would provide public notice to other organizations.
It would be unallocated up until our next meeting when we would allocate.
It's not listed on this ordinance, is it?
It's part of, it's in here, so the question would be whether or not...
Correct, but not separately. So you would adopt this ordinance as is.
But as part of the budget document, you would have to move it out of the accounts into that, what Scott, I think, is recommending.
Yes, but it's, the amount of money stays the same. It's the same budgetary amount.
I just don't see any advantage in postponing the discussion unless there's additional information we're going to receive between now and our next meeting.
Well, then I'll point out that you could simply amend the motion that's on the table by changing it to something more to your liking. And if you can get support of the council for that, then we'd go forward.
Okay, so I amend the...
In the manner that you chose.
I recommend that we amend the motion. I was hoping you'd just jump in and do this, but...
No, we're not going to.
You're not going to?
No.
I amend a motion to have this discussion this evening. We have a lot of people here who are interested in the outcome, so I think we deserve to talk about it, or they deserve us to talk about it.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to amend the original motion and to talk about it tonight. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, we've got five to one to discuss it. Mr. O'Malley voted no on the amendment. Let's, um, let's discuss it.
Well, let me ask a simple question and one of which I think we should take more time to prepare for, which is that these are tax dollars. And so there is a question as to how many of those tax dollars should be given to an NGO, a non-governmental organization, for allocation? I think the case could be made that the council would then be abrogating its responsibility in allocation of tax dollars and giving it to a private organization to allocate for us. Well, that's nice and convenient for us because then people aren't going to come to us with their hands out. They're going to come to Kim Heineman in the chamber with their hands out and it makes life easier for us. But we have essentially shrugged off our responsibility. Now, we have a responsibility under our charter to pay 40% to a tourism entity and I have no problem with that. If we were to amend, to increase our room tax, we would then have to go, just like touching wiring in a building to change it, you've got to bring everything up to code. We would then have to be at 70%. What the mayor's suggesting, we go to the 70% without getting the benefit of changing the wiring. And I would say to us here that we're simply getting rid of a responsibility that unfortunately is ours to shoulder and that we should do our jobs.
Other discussion?
I have a real problem with donating the money to non-tourism issues. I think the Tourism Bureau was set up and the law was passed to promote the city and who better to handle our tourism dollars than the Chamber of Commerce Tourism Bureau? I think that was the intent of the law. I think it gets to be real fuzzy about nonprofits coming to us and asking for money. I kind of feel like we're United Way and I don't think that was the purpose of the tourism dollars. I don't think it was to fund a lot of these very, very good organizations. Again, Dean, you gave us a list of other organizations. Maybe we should send letters to them and say, come in and ask for money from us if that's what we're doing. I don't know how we got in a situation where we gave a select few a lot of our money. And I think that's inappropriate and I don't think it's the right thing to do.
No, you're not advocating that because I'm not.
Well, I didn't say you were. I'm saying what we've been doing, I think, is wrong.
Well, I agree that...
Well, Scott, since we've already heard from you and I think there's others that want to be heard and then let's go around and we'll come back so we don't get into an argument between you. Randy?
Well, I think that there's, you know, coming from the business of tourism for over 12 years, directly related to the chamber, you know, I think they need more of what is able to be offered in the 70%. I'm in favor of that, not in favor of raising the tax at this point. But I also think we need to continue to fund the FIPs Center for the $8,000. I see now, and what they have done and brought to this community, as have others, and I don't take that away from anybody, but the amount of work, advertising, news articles, magazine articles, everything that the FIPs Center's been involved with, and that's where my concern is, is the FIPs Center. And I'm supporting them for $8,000 because they've really gotten Hudson on the map, one of the entities that have done that. So, you know, I think there's things in there and we've struggled through this, Kim, through when I was on the Tourism Board. Why are some of these others getting this money? It doesn't make sense. They're not putting heads in beds. They're not putting people at the table for dinner. You know, I have no doubt that the Chamber can't, or the Tourism Bureau can divide and be fair in the process. I think we should keep on to, you know, supporting the arts in the way that we've done in the past.
All right, Lori?
Well, Randy just sort of illustrated my point before I made it, but this process is entirely arbitrary. It's entirely subjective. It's entirely vulnerable to the whims of elected leaders. It needs to be a much more objective process. It needs to be done by people who know what they're doing. Frankly, this made all of us on finance a little bit queasy when we saw where the dollars were going with seemingly no explanation. I fully support the 70% going to the Tourism Bureau. And Randy, I guess I don't put the FIPs in a separate category. They do wonderful work, as do other organizations that are listed here and are not listed here. I would go so far as to say, you know, I'm not sure I would even keep the FIPs and some of these other organizations under the city's funding. I would, I'd really like to see us migrate to a point where the Tourism Bureau is dealing with the bulk of the funding and we're not making these judgment calls. I'd like to see us stick with things like the fireworks, city beautification, but when we're talking about judging organizations, it needs to be done much more, much more objectively and with set criteria of which we are not, we've not been doing to date. I'm not going to say we're not capable of it, but we've not been doing it.
Pam?
I agree with Randy and Lori. I would like to see the Tourism Bureau manage that 70% that you initially suggested. I think they're in a position to, to manage that and be consistent with how they make a decision on how that, those funds are distributed. So I support that and I think, you know, I think that how some of the other funding has been distributed perhaps was, was not as, as consistent or, you know, I don't know how it all was managed and how the percentages were determined, but I guess I struggle with some of the other organizations that you had listed up there and they're all very worthy and deserve support also.
Thank you. Lee?
I have two comments. One is we're, we're saying that we don't want to separate out who gets what, which I understand a lot of the conversation that's been had. One of the things that we haven't asked is for a presentation from the Tourism Bureau to say, how are you going to do it? What are you, what's your presentation? What's your plan? I do support the FIPs because of, it's a unique destination which a lot of people come to as a unique, something's very, very unique to this city. Most cities in the entire state can't say that we have something as unique. So I think that that, I believe that we should continue to support them at the levels we have. But I have to ask the second question and that is, so we're handing off responsibility, but I don't see a plan for how that's going to be handled. And we haven't asked for one, you know, we haven't asked for, how will you take care of this and what's your process for deciding? I think that because they are our tax dollars, we should be able to ask that question. There was another one in here I was a little concerned about and that is, we talk about the cemetery and I really do believe that the cemetery is a city asset because many of these people are residents who now reside there. Yeah.
The taxes.
And they're right there. But they're here while they were here, okay? So I do have, so I do have a concern for lowering funding for that organization.
All right. You know, I heard Randy's suggestion that we maintain the funding for the FIPs in particular at the $8,000. And you mentioned maintaining the funding for the cemetery. And to be honest, but maybe it illustrates my point that this is all general fund dollars is really the area that we could change and maintain all these community subsidies would be in the beautification project. We could simply move them to another part of our city budget. You might say, well, why aren't those banners already in the Public Works budget? I don't know. I mean, because we've paid for them this way instead. If we were to move some of those dollars over into Public Works, there'd be more of this room tax dollars to distribute out to charities and we could easily do that. But my point along the way here has been, I think that's the wrong direction. I think, I think that's the whole point is that we should try to somehow wean away from this idea because we're the only ones that are doing it this way.
Well, that's part of my, my request for a presentation from the Chamber, so that we, or from the Tourism Bureau, pardon me, so that we can feel comfortable that as we're transferring these responsibilities, we're comfortable what's going to happen to them.
I'm going to interpret that as a request for Kim Heineman from the Chamber to answer your question. We have any objection to that?
Could we do an addendum on that? The part that's missing then is we need some oversight and we need a report as, on a semi-annual basis, I would guess, as to how are these dollars being spent because we still have to maintain control. We are elected to do so and we must do so.
I don't know if you want to call it oversight or guarantee. Is that certain? One of these, the FIPs has guaranteed that money?
Well, I think that Lee and I have together put, he's got half of it, which is, tell us ahead of time what you plan to do with this. And then the other half is my part, which is, did you do what you said you were going to do with this money? I mean, I'm in total agreement that we, we should not be giving this out. We can't be giving this out to certain specific charities.
Nor do I think...
Were we to adopt a, an increased room tax and we were under the 70%, support for groups like the FIPs on the basis that it's tourism-related would not be allowed under the 70%. We would then have to try to maintain these community subsidies out of the 30%. It doesn't meet the definition of the law for what you're doing as tourism promotion and development under the law. That's why the communities that have adopted this more recently or raised their tax more recently, they aren't able to do this. We've done all this, we've had all this flexibility because we've been grandfathers all this time.
And we can maintain that flexibility.
Well, we can, but I mean, I partly propose this to you in response to the question. You know, I look at it, I'll take your analogy that when you want to remodel your home, you have to bring it up to code. I guess what I'm saying is, let's go up to code just on the standpoint because that's the best practice. It's the safest and best way to go. You don't have to wait until somebody tells you you have to go up to code. You can just do it. So, Kim, give us a brief presentation of your ideas for how you would spend a little extra money next year.
I'm prepared 100% for that, but what I would like to say is that I'm very, very encouraged by your conversations about the Tourism Bureau receiving the 70% of room tax, which is the state statute. With my involvement with the State Tourism Department and the Advisory Committee and Marketing Committee for the tourism entity in the state that I'm involved with, I hear it all the time. I mean, communities in the state realize that tourism is, I think, the number three economic driver in the state of Wisconsin and in order to encourage additional tourism, which in turn then affects the economy in a town or a city, we have to be able to have a marketing plan in place. The existing Tourism Bureau, of course, has a plan in place for the 40% that we spend. We spend the 40%, which is approximately the $60,000 that you heard and then some. The Tourism Bureau right now usually runs in the deficit of about $14,000 a year, which means we are very encouraged to spend money to promote tourism in this area and in this city. which means we are very encouraged to spend money to promote tourism in this area and in this city. We have plans in place for, actually, first I should say that the statute is pretty clear, as you saw, as to where the funds can be spent, what the processes are involved, and the reporting that's involved. Our books are always public records, so you're always able to see that. But what, what I would say is that I have a board of directors that govern the Chamber and the Tourism Bureau. There are eleven members that are on that board. They have not, I mean, this is the first that I've been asked to provide any type of plan or procedure because you haven't, you haven't asked me, as Lee mentioned, and/or it hasn't been this close to an adoption. So I, I don't have an actual plan at this moment, but I certainly will, and I'll have it as fast as you want. Please know, however, that the funds that we do spend, I can share with you. They are promotion with events and programs. There are events with advertising, which we do extensively. There, there are website, there are mailings, there are staffing, and all of those things that the Tourism Bureau is really, really, really good at. And what I would encourage you to realize is that we would like to be able to do more of the same. We would like to promote the Hudson City and the area more aggressively by having additional funding. And there will have to be plans, policies, procedures, and review process in place for organizations such as the FIPS and others who would come to us with grant requests. So we will have a formalized process that my board will institute and govern, and that will be my responsibility to report to you as, as you see fit, whether it be quarterly or what have you. But obviously, our board will be very much attuned to where our funding is being spent for tourism because there's rules about what you can and can't do.
I have a question. What, what organizations do you support for tourism today?
Well, all of the funding that we get from, from the forty percent now is, is promoting events and programs that the Tourism Bureau does.
Which would be like?
We do all of our, all of our literature, all of our promotion for website, all of our mailings, all of our community events and programs. So all of the advertising that we do, if I hadn't mentioned that, we have a marketing plan. We are, we're doing Circle Wisconsin, which are motor coach group tours. That's a new market that we've entered into. We have a tourism committee that meets every month to discuss ideas and opportunities. So that group then reports to our board of directors, so.
So right now, there aren't any, what I want to call, organizations that you, they're, they're all things within, the reason you say you need policies and procedures is right now, everything you have is within your scope of things that you are doing.
That's correct.
You don't have any sub-organizations that are doing tourism-type activities?
Not sub-organizations, but sixty thou-
Well, the Hot Air Fair might be considered somewhat close to that. I mean, they were, that was once an event run through the Chamber that then was spun off, became an independent entity, and then came to council and sought direct room tax funding, and has been getting it ever since. Under this new model, they'd be back talking with the Tourism Bureau about how much they should get. And then the case for how, you know, the accountability, the exact thing that Scott's saying, you know, what happened there with the Tourism Bureau instead of with the council.
Right.
Mr., Kim, it seems to me that what you have just said, which I totally agree with, Fitz handed glove with my motion, which is to postpone this to our next meeting. Let Kim do the presentation that she just said she would be happy to do on a moment's, on less, somewhat more than a moment's notice. And let her come back to us and give us that presentation so that we can make an informed decision.
Right.
Well, I mean-
Could I ask the total of the thirty percent? If we go seventy, thirty? Based off one hundred and fifty, what would that be?
About forty-five thousand.
And where would that be directed? Split between what, kind of what you phased out?
I think that, that's this list here, isn't it?
What I proposed was fifteen thousand in beautification, twenty-five thousand seven hundred in grants for support of history, culture, and the arts. That's with the maximum of four thousand dollars for each private entity. And for this year, thirty-five hundred dollars between Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Community Action. And that would be fifty percent less for each of them this year with the idea that you can't expect them to take a complete cut all in one year.
The, we're talking about two different numbers, you know, forty percent or seventy percent, but it sounds like there's a number in between, whether it's sixty or whether it's sixty-five. There sounds like there's someplace in between. We can come up with a balance of, of these dollars.
But that's sort of what we've been trying, I mean, that's what we've been doing. But it's arbitrary. Seventy percent at least is in line with the state statute.
Not as pertains to us. Forty percent is our state statute.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment? Who better promotes our city than a Tourism Bureau? I mean, if each individual unit, whether it's the FIP Center, the YMCA, the Basketball Association, Hockey Association, all try to do their own marketing plan, don't we get more bang for our buck utilizing the Tourism Bureau? To me, if we're going to, if we're going to give money to these other organizations, we ought to open it up. We ought to call the YMCA. We want to ask these other organizations to come in and ask for money. We can't be arbitrary on how we're giving money to, to these other groups. If we're not going to use it for tourism and it's going to be a donation, then we should open up the, the floodgates. I'm opposed to that. I don't believe that the tax dollars should be given to nonprofits unless it's used in the tourism dollars. I just think it's inappropriate.
You don't consider that center tourists?
Well, tourism, of course they bring people in, but so does the Hockey Association, so does the Basketball Association, so does the, every, they're all great organizations.
Absolutely, I agree with it.
But where does it end?
Well, I do like the mayor's, the way he laid out support for the culture and arts in your presentation. That way, it takes him out of that conversation of tourism, which is a nice way of looking at it.
Should we be supporting sports?
Right.
Should we be supporting the golf course? They're a nonprofit organization. Should they receive some money? They bring people here to play golf.
Well, that's a slippery slope. It wasn't so many years ago, and I was here when the suggestion was made that the cemetery funding actually had a tourism component because people come to town for funerals, stay in motels, eat in restaurants while they're here, and fill up their car. And, you know, let's face it, we're not supporting cemetery because there's a tourism component. But if you want to take it down that far, you can say that about almost anything that happens that, that has attendance by someone who lives somewhere other than in Hudson. And that doesn't meet the standard of a transient tourist. Somebody coming to town for a, for a specific event, that came here for that specific event or program or funeral or whatever, is not a transient tourist. The idea of this funding is to try to get people to go on a vacation and stop here or come here. That's really what it's all about, and it's-
But it's about to set up Hudson as a destination location for visiting, for coming to Hudson for a purpose.
I have no qualms about the seventy percent. I just simply want guarantees that the FIP Center would receive their share, whether you like it or not, the verbiage, that's-
If I could bring this back to my motion, which is just simply to put this off to our next meeting so that we can have the presentation that Kim would like to do. We can know where the money is going to go instead of just saying, here's a bunch of money, hope you do well with it. Let's know where it's going to go, and then let, we'll have accountability further on down the road as to, is that where the money went? It's as simple as that.
Then, do you think we should go to all the nonprofits in town and ask them to submit proposals to us?
That's not part, that's not part of my motion.
Well, no, I, I'm asking if we're going to continue to fund some groups.
No, that's also not part of my motion. My motion is to postpone this so that Kim can come to us with a presentation. Nobody's trying to take any money away from Kim. I have not moved that we not give this money for tourism. I want to do it for tourism. I'm just saying, maybe we ought to know what we're doing before we get in the car and start driving. Maybe we ought to know where we're going.
Well, the hardest thing for an elected official to do is say no to anyone. And what's before you tonight is the hardest thing that anyone ever has to do, which is to say, you know what? There's a limited pool of money, and you're not going to get everything you were getting before. You could say that most elected officials are congenitally unable to do what we're talking about here.
Is anybody trying to give money to these organizations? I don't hear that. I'm not. I'm just simply saying, let's find out ahead of time where the money's going to go. So we know where that was spent. Well, for instance, let me give you, no, you're going to hate me for this, but let me give, let me give you an example. Let us say that the board that Kim serves with decides the best use of the money is to hire another staff person to do stuff around their office and make them run more efficiently. Now, is that going to bring more people to Hudson?
Absolutely.
Don't know. However, we should have the opportunity to discuss that with them because it's tax money that it is our duty to allocate.
All right. My understanding of where we're at is Scott made the original motion to adopt the budget and not deal with this tonight. Lee amended the motion to say we would deal with it tonight, and that's where we stand right now. If we're going to deal with it tonight, and if we're going to give the money to the FIPS, then someone's going to have to suggest where that money's going to come from. And that's the hard part. And if you don't want to do that tonight, then you're back to where Scott is, is let's postpone this and talk about it some more. Otherwise, as I said, you know, somebody else has got to get less because there's a limited pool of money here.
And are there other organizations we can cherry pick tonight and say, I think they should get more. I think they shouldn't be cut. You know, if we're going to go down that road of designating one organization, it's, it's dangerous.
We've been doing that for years, as in the past.
And that's why we're trying to stop it.
Okay, we could probably put the, well, I'll throw you out some possibilities. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Community Action. You know, I had proposed a two-year phase out. They could be dropped right now. That'd be thirty-five hundred dollars. You could instead give their money to the FIPS.
You're, you're ignoring the other possibility, and that is that seventy percent maybe isn't the right number for this two thousand and nine. And I'm not saying we're cutting a, we're cutting a, a number in the sand or a year in the sand. The question is, is this the right number for two thousand and nine? But I would like to see the presentation from the Chamber of Tourism Bureau, pardon me, the Tourism Bureau that says, providing these extra funding, here's our plans and process for allocating it. I, I don't disagree that, that it doesn't make a lot of sense the way we're doing it. There's certain things that I, we differ in how we should support them. But I would like to see the presentation. On the, based on the presentation, I think we can make better decisions.
You may be right, but I will make this point to you, that Mr. Hanson's been taking notes like crazy. And in about two days, every nonprofit group in town is going to be sending you those same emails and letters that you've been getting from one nonprofit group for the last week. And it isn't necessarily going to be any easier on December fifteenth.
At least we will know what the proposal is from the Tourism Bureau, which we don't now. And it was unfair, it's unfair to ask him to produce one now.
I guess I have a question. What is our fear? Is our fear that they're not going to give dollars to the organizations we all think they should give them to? Or that they're not capable?
I can't think of any other organization that we would say, we're going to give you thirty thousand dollars, which is what the increase here is. We're going to give you thirty thousand dollars, and don't bother making a presentation about what you're going to do with it. We're just going to give it to you. I don't think we have ever done that, and I don't think we should start it now.
And I don't think that would be the Tourism Bureau's intent, that's for sure, because I'm governed by a board.
Absolutely. You know, Kim and I are on the same page on this, by the way. She wants to make a presentation. I want to hear her presentation.
That's fine. Can we, can we approve this tonight, contingent upon if we're unhappy with her presentation, then we won't?
There's really two options. Either, as I mentioned before, you can for tonight move it to unallocated and make the decision at the next meeting. The other option, I suppose, would be to approve it as it is and make a budget amendment at some point. Those are, that's, if you want to hear her presentation, those would be your two options. Betty, I'm sorry.
It's cheaper to do it tonight because I've got the cover issue with budget amendment.
So what Betty's saying, it'd be easier to move it to unallocated tonight than it would-
Well, it'd be cheaper to do something tonight and publish at once.
Yeah, if it was unallocated, I'd probably, well, actually, I'd probably, you know, I'll publish.
Just within the department.
So I guess I'm wondering, it's like, if we're not happy with the presentation, are we going to change seventy to sixty or fifty-five? What is it, I'm just wondering what it's going to, what it's going to get us.
Well, I'd probably bore you to death with the presentation about what the law talks about a tourism entity, but the fact is, everyone does this, and the reason they all do it, Scott, is because it is mandated by the law. I mean-
I'm not arguing.
No.
I think that what advises is between now and then, we can come up with, if we're going to go to seventy, do we want to increase the percentage? How do we want to allocate those funds? I think there's a lot of discussions been had, and maybe give the cha, mayor a chance to go back and rethink based on what he's heard, what he's heard.
I'll tell you what, I've already given you two, I've already gone out there on this twice. And this last proposal was an attempt to try to do something to make all of you happy, which clearly isn't going to necessarily happen, so I'm ready to turn it over to the council.
They've probably got some ideas that we haven't heard, and I think maybe we ought to hear them.
On the other hand, you're right, I do. But on the other hand, we've been running a pretty strong organization for the last fifty-five years. I mean, you can rest assured that we will spend the money in an appropriate way, and we'll provide you with a, a proposal and a plan, which I'll have to do at my board level as well. We're looking about the big, big picture in tourism promotion, really. I mean, we're talking about driving economic impact to our community, and the law is clear as to where I can spend those funds. And, and, and I already mentioned that for some of the other organizations who would ask for grant requests, they would have to follow a procedure and a process that we will develop, and it will be a board approval situation that would be off of your plate and onto the Tourism Bureau's plate. And at any time, if you ask me to, or quarterly or what have you, I would be happy to provide you with that detail. So I guess my encouragement is to move forward so we can get going with our processes. Our other community neighbors in the area are, right now, spending a whole lot more money to promote their towns than we're able to in Hudson. And I, and I really want to go forward to keep us in that driver's seat. We're doing a great job.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table to adopt the budget as presented. Any other discussion?
I believe that Scott's was to move the funds to unallocated.
Move them to unallocated.
Not as presented.
To move the funds to unallocated.
Correct.
Okay.
That was my motion.
To adopt the budget with the room tax funds unallocated. That's the way it stands. Be determined at a later date. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to two, Burchill and-
And that meets the two-thirds.
So the budget is adopted with a four to two vote. It requires two-thirds for adoption. The appropriation ordinance nine dash oh eight is adopted. Next item on our agenda is number C, authorization to prepay the two thousand and six general obligation promissory notes with Associated Bank.
With the adoption of the budget tonight, part of, that entails the debt reduction. What we had was proposed a five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar principal payment on our two thousand and six general obligation note. With that, we reduce the debt obligation or debt levy that was associated with that by the prepayment or by the payment of that loan with using the TID funds that we had received from the closure of the TID. I think Randy did an article in the paper last week, did rough numbers. I did a worksheet in front of you that gave you the actual numbers. The Hudson School District got one eight, one million eight hundred fifty-nine thousand. WITC got two hundred and fifty-six thousand. The county got seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, and the city got one million one hundred thousand.
and the city got one million one-hundred-thousand. So, the general obligation note, we're still owing five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and we're paying four-point-seven-five percent. So, what I would like council to do is give me authorization, as long as we have adopted the budget tonight, to prepay that now, not wait till 2009 and save those funds. By doing so, I have some taxes that I had levied for that debt. I have the remainder of twelve-thousand dollars to be applied there. I have excess debt funds accumulated from interest earnings and prepayments, fifty-one-thousand dollars. So, to take four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand from that one-point-one-million gives us six-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand dollars remaining to restrict for future debt reduction or future capital purchasing.
Okay, so Betty's recommendation is to prepay.
Salute.
We have a motion to do so. Is there a second? A second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Thank you, Betty. Communications and recommendations of the mayor, I have a few items, couple of update items for you. One is the Police Department has two of their computers in the squad cars up and running. They seem to be running pretty well the last week, and the officers that are using those are finding that it is faster to write a ticket. They can write a citation in six to eight minutes.
We'll take that as a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Unless it's you.
But it also provides other productivity improvements. There's two parts to the program, and one part is the Visions program that Dispatch is able to dispatch them through messages that come across their computer. And in the process, rather than give them, for example, a license plate or a description just over the radio, it actually flashes up on their computer, so that if they're busy doing something else, the information stays there. They can communicate back and forth. And I rode along last night to watch this in action, and it is a definite productivity increase. North Hudson's got it. The County Sheriff's Department has got it. River Falls has got it. We've been a little bit behind, but we're catching up rapidly. We've got two of them up and running, and we expect to have all ten up and running by the end of December, and I don't see any reason that we won't meet that goal. A second item, on Friday, ten days ago, we successfully tested our large diesel generator. It's a trailer-mounted generator. We've owned it since 2000. It is designed for emergency operations at City Hall as an emergency operation centers in the event that power is off here. We can bring that trailer down. It had never had a successful test. On Friday afternoon, we shut off all electricity here, hooked up the generator, had electricians standing by, and it worked just fine. They assured us that it had the capacity to run all of City Hall, including probably our air conditioning if it would happen in the summer. It is a monster generator. A little noisy, but it ran very well. It's an Army surplus unit, and so, that was an item that was requested on the capital improvements this year for fifty thousand dollars for a new generator. And I said, well, let's test our old one first, and it seems that it actually works just fine. Our holiday parking will go into effect the day after Thanksgiving. On Friday, we'll have two-hour free parking, as we've done every year, and courtesy parking tickets. Go on to encourage people to do your holiday shopping in Hudson. With the way the economy is, I would encourage everyone to consider coming down to our great shops, stores, restaurants in downtown Hudson and all of Hudson, and spend some of your dollars here and support our local businesses. And we'll do our part by letting you park a little easier and a little freer. Our outstanding EMS service was recently awarded by the West Central Regional Trauma Advisory Council, an award in recognition of valuable contributions to the trauma system in western Wisconsin by assuming a leadership role. One of the best and strongest EMS services in the West Central region, and so, we're proud of them and would like to recognize them for that. And I have a mayoral proclamation of Willis Miller Day. Whereas Willis H. Miller was an outstanding resident and friend of this city for more than eighty years, and whereas during his sixty-eight-year tenure with the local Hudson Star Observer, Willis demonstrated exceptional journalism skills and record-keeping practices to preserve the history of this community, and provided great assistance to the St. Croix County Historical Society. And whereas Willis was always willing to share with others his extensive knowledge of Hudson's history, aided by his massive index card file system and many articles and books that he had written, and whereas Willis was very active in city projects, served on many local boards and committees, and was chairman of the Hudson Housing Authority for more than twenty years, he helped our community build its first hospital and its replacement in 2003, and worked with the small theater groups, theater arts group that grew into the prestigious FIP Center for the Arts. Now, therefore, I do proclaim Friday, November twenty-eighth, as Willis Miller Day in the city of Hudson, in recognition of his outstanding community involvement, accomplishments, and civic leadership. You all know that Willis passed last week, and there is a memorial service on Friday. His, I believe it's his birthday on Friday. And what's the time of it again?
Randy, eleven?
Eleven.
Visitation begins at eleven. There's a service at one P.M.
Visitation from eleven to one, and service at one P.M. at O'Connell Funeral Home. I'd like the council to think about naming a Hudson History Day in honor of Willis, when all the people in Hudson would annually take some time to think about how important Hudson's history is. It's important to us on the basis of tourism, and it's really part of our unique identity here. History's important to us, and probably no one has done more to keep that in the front of our minds than Willis Miller. So, I guess I'd like us to consider making this Fourth Friday in November each year, a Hudson History Day each and every year. But I'd encourage people that are interested in celebrating his life to come to the O'Connell Funeral Home on Friday to do that. That's all I have as communications from the mayor. Are there any communications and items for future agendas from any older person?
Earlier, we spoke about the temporary wine and beer license restrictions. I think that's something that should be taken forward, so that this idea doesn't get abused, that temporary licenses are for temporary occasions. I'd like to see that addressed.
Would you like to see that go to your Public Safety Committee?
We can. Is that where it goes?
Finance, I think it should be. Alcohol related licenses.
Like to wish all the citizens of Hudson a happy Thanksgiving this Thursday. If you're driving, make it a safe holiday.
Anyone else?
Moves to...
Attorney?
Briefly, just a reminder, the next meeting is Monday, December fifteenth, and that'll be our only meeting in December.
Moves adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.